Okay, are we ready to open?
We're ready.
I can't remember any of these people's names. Oh, this is so far. Oh, sorry.
Okay, I'd like to call the Regional School Committee to order and begin with our reorg. Let me start first though by welcoming Lynn Collins to the Regional Committee, Michael Jaffe to the Regional from Dover, and Kay Poyer to the Regional from Sherburne. Thank you guys. And do we have a motion for a chair?
I'd like to make a motion for Anne Hovey, Chair of the Regional School Committee.
Second?
Any discussion?
Yeah, can I just?
That's what I was worried about. Okay, all in favor? Opposed?
I can't.
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Here's the gavel.
I voted. Put you down. Thanks. All right, can I then hear a nomination for the Vice Chair?
So, oh, I nominate Maggie Sharon.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And also do I hear a nomination for a Secretary?
I'd like to nominate Judy Miller to be our Secretary for the Regional School Committee.
Second?
Okay, Michael, second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. The hard stuff's done.
We are reorged.
I'd also like to say welcome and thank you all for agreeing to serve for another three years, for some of you, and agreeing to take this on. Thank you so much. Are there any community comments? Okay, hearing none, but we'll get to staff reports. You want a second to sit down, Scott, or you want to just fill right in?
I'm ready to go.
Excellent.
I just wanted to point out a few things and really thank you for the opportunity to speak and welcome to all of the new members. We had our arts festival last Monday, which was just phenomenal. And then this coming Thursday, we have a STEAM fair for our sixth graders where they'll be presenting their collaborative civilization projects. It's quite a take, so if you're around and you want to see. And then I would be remiss if I did not comment on our DC and Boston trips. I can speak personally to the DC trip because I have the privilege of joining them. Our eighth grade class came in with quite a reputation, which was less than stellar. They set the bar very high for next year's class, the sixth graders. Their behavior, their citizenship on this trip was just outstanding. And it's really every chaperone to a person was so complimentary of how they presented themselves and how they represented DS. It made me feel very good as the headmaster. And that was with some adversity in that we had arranged to have the music at Jefferson Memorial, but unfortunately, Mother Nature did not cooperate. So we waited around as long as we could because they had their boat cruise that night, so we couldn't wait another half hour where we possibly could have done it. But then they performed the next morning at the hotel. So it wasn't lost, but they handled it with grace and even the kids who weren't performing. So to them, kudos. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to.
I'm good, but thank you. Your reports are, they're a great read, really, really informative, so I appreciate that. And also huge thanks to the chaperones for the trips because that's a big undertaking.
They give a lot of their personal time, but every one of them thoroughly enjoyed it and that's because of the kids and young men and young ladies.
It is a real credit to our system that we're still able to do these trips. Many, many school districts have moved away from it frankly because the teachers no longer want to take on this challenge. So it's music to my ears to hear that it went as well as it did and that the teachers are feeling really good about it because we know how important, we hear about the different kind of learning that takes place outside the classroom. This is a prime example, so it's really important. I'm glad to hear it went well.
We had the, an all-school assembly where we were able to share that with the sixth and seventh graders. And then we had a little mishap with the smoke alarm today. And that was at lunch, so half the school was at first lunch. The other half was standing out in the rain for a few minutes. And we decided, you know, we didn't know how long it would take because it wasn't a fire drill, so we had them go over the auditorium. It was extended because they needed to get, make sure things were safe. And they were able to transition from the cafeteria to the auditorium and the auditorium to the cafeteria to have second lunch go off seamlessly. And that was the whole school. And that too went well.
And impacted high school science exams, so the radio was alive today. John, also thanks to you for navigating that and rolling with it. This is a tough, tough week for educators. The last week of school is always challenging. It is true about separation anxiety and nobody knows it better than the principals, families, students, staff. It's just a challenging time of year and anxieties seem to ratchet up and then you throw a fire alarm into it and that's a big ask. So nice job by you guys today. It went off without a hitch, so.
High school kids took it in stride. From my standpoint, I was.
Yeah, well, kudos to you guys.
The adults are the ones that get frantic. The kids are like, whatever, give them next 40 minutes to think about the answers.
Thank you, appreciate that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hovey, and welcome to the new members as well. I know each of you as parents, so welcome to the Regional School Committee as well and hope that you enjoy this experience. As many of you know, we had our commencement exercises last Thursday. We are so grateful that the weather cooperated and we were able to be outside, which just makes for a nicer experience and provides unlimited seating for extended family and friends, which is really nice. We had some terrific musical performances. I'm always so, so impressed by the level of talent that we have at such a small school in the music department. That was fantastic. We, the evening before, had a wonderful senior awards night. A lot of students were recognized and I think we're really grateful and appreciative of those opportunities. And one of the things I just wanted to point out from the packet, a real thanks to Gretchen Donahue through a DSCF grant. She organized and implemented a full day of poetry for all juniors. And we brought in a number of poets from an Eastern Massachusetts consortium, many of which are college professors and professional poets. Feedback from the kids was outstanding. Kids felt as though they were really challenged and engaged and it was innovative and it was something where it was a really different type of day for them, yet it was really enriching and part of the learning process. And it's an example like that of those types of days that I think kids end up remembering as part of their high school experience. And we're also grateful that next April, we'll be putting on another seminar day, which is another great experience for the whole school. And that'll take place in April and thanks to a DSCF grant, we'll be able to pull that off. So there'll be a lot of work leading up to that, but we look forward to it and it's a great experience. And our plan is to have rotation so that all students get to experience it at least once during their four years, if not twice. So if members of the Regional School Committee know of people in the community or know through contacts, people that you think would be beneficial for coming to speak to our kids or to present to our kids, by all means, we'll be looking for that feedback. I'm spearheading it along with a group of people. In the past, Becky Vizelis has sort of run it. We may still have Becky be sort of a de facto assistant for this, but we're going to be organizing it just a tad differently this coming year.
What are the topics that they speak on? I forget, I'm sorry.
So it's everything. It's really, some of it has to do with the arts, some of it has to do with careers, some of it is global affairs. We've had professors from Tufts, we've had musicians, we've had artists, lawyers, professional athletes. We had a surgeon who conducted the first facial reconstructive surgery presented to the kids. So just some fantastic people, many of which are in our community, which is really neat too, because then you're able to bring the community to the school and sort of share and learn from each other. And all of those presenters loved the opportunity too. For them, it was a real treat and obviously for us, it was an honor. So be happy to answer any other questions.
I just wanted to say thank you for all, again, like Scott, the really thorough update. Thank you for all the data oncologists and.
Yeah, and thanks to Rob Williamson for putting.
Clearly, that's somebody who loves work, so it's super appreciated. And especially kudos to those things like the Mrs. Donahue project. And also thank you for all of the clear communication as a parent of a high school student regarding the changes to the schedule today with the unexpected fire drill that's happened and you guys really handled it really well.
Well, thank you. And the kids did a great job. As Scott said, they really did considering the circumstances and the teachers were really good. They were sitting there talking with them and just trying to keep it as a relaxed atmosphere. And I guess it's one of those situations of some resiliency and, you know, just trying to figure things out. But yeah, it was an unexpected challenge. I said initially, I said, oh, it's middle school. No, that's okay. Then I thought, oh, no, it's my science department. Greg Tucker came running over and I said, I already know. How many? And we had four, so there were four high school exams going on. So fortunately, it wasn't the whole department, but it was enough and, you know, so we worked with Conley and thanks to Tricia Schmidt in the central office who worked with us to sort of shift the buses and, yeah.
And the good news is it's not MCAS, it's internally controlled.
Yeah, 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 that's true.
And just think, there's three more days left in the week. There could be all sorts of more exciting opportunities for the kids to demonstrate their maturity.
I think what we should do is bring those golden retrievers back. We had them in yesterday and today.
For the adults?
Well, for everybody, yeah. We had them in today in our gym and yesterday in the courtyard. Scout and Cal came in today, both three-month-old golden retrievers, so the kids were just crazy over them, so.
Can they come to these meetings?
Yeah, I wish they could, I know. We'll have to talk to Dr. Keo about them.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. Beth?
So my report was somewhat short simply because you heard a lot at the joint committee meeting. I do have a presentation on the innovation committee and the work done this year. I know people are tired, so I'm happy to follow your lead. I can give it so that you have the same information that the other locals have as well as all of the faculty so far.
Do you just want to have her send it to us?
Is there a way you can send it to us?
Yes. Yeah. And I'll send it to you and I'll send you the notes because otherwise it's just pictures and words.
We would love that.
I think what's important is that, you know, like as I mentioned to some of the other school committee members who are leaving tonight, it's really important for us to maintain the momentum, which is partly why we sometimes go through things over and over, such as the action plan this evening, because it's important for people to realize that the strategic plan is really important to us and we are holding ourselves accountable. And so when we ask teachers or the schools to make changes, it's because it's a district initiative. So that's why it's always important for us to continue to push the messaging for the community as well. But I think Beth, being able to post it, it's been, it's been a long couple of nights for all of us. So I think if you could send it to the school committee members, that would be awesome. And if you could post it or we could send a link, we are still planning to send out one final newsletter that will update the community on the start times information, kind of a recap of the things that we did this year, and we can include a link to that, which I think would be helpful to the community because you were planning to include stuff about the innovations. Does that work for you?
Right, that's fine. Just can I mention the next steps so you understand what's coming up?
Yes.
So right now, we have a visual portrait of a graduate draft that's being tweaked by a graphic designer and we have our seven-ish key competencies that we feel that all our graduates need to, for success post DS. And so that will be published this fall to all stakeholders to see. We have our principals visiting Finland this summer to learn from their experience and success in education. Thanks to DSCF grant, we have 13 classrooms, A through 12, that are going to be emptied of desks and clutter and totally redone with the furniture that supports collaborative learning and flexible seating. And we have a workshop day for all of our teachers on August 21st where K through 12, pre-K through 12 actually, all are invited to come and begin phase two of this work. We had 29 educators involved in phase one in the development of a portrait of a graduate, but in order to make the portrait of a graduate come to life in the classroom, we need more than 29 teachers. So we've opened this up and to date, 51 teachers have responded that they'll be here in August. So now our cohort of people in the discussion is up to 80 teachers, which is, you know, more than a third of our faculty, which is great. Next year, we're going to engage all stakeholder groups, including obviously teachers, students, and families and community members in talking about how to make this portrait of a graduate come to life and what does that mean for changes, whether it's changes to, you know, requirements or course loads, teaching and learning structures, et cetera. So please look for opportunities to engage with us in those conversations. Next year, you know, as with any change or growth, you take the people who are interested and you let them run with it. So we have early adopters and pioneers who will be going out to High Tech High, four of them in the fall to learn about project-based learning. We have one educator going to the design school at Stanford to learn about design thinking. And we have four more that are going to Project Based Learning World to learn about PBL. And the goal is for them to come back, create units, and implement this into their curriculum, get others excited about it, and then teach their co-partners during the full day of professional development after Thanksgiving. We also, thanks to DSCF, have a grant to send teachers near and far. So obviously, it's easy for us to drive to Wellesley or Coggar Carlisle or need them to learn about their interdisciplinary programs at the high school or to Nuvoo in Cambridge or MIT, the Innovation Center, to check out the programs. But there are also many great things going on across the country, so we plan to send out five teams to fly five teams of teachers out to some of these cooler places, learn about the programs, and bring them back. And then beyond that, we can't really say at this point because our action plan will come out of all the conversations with the stakeholder groups next year. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate your accommodating of the time.
No problem.
Thank you very much. And if people have questions, we can certainly discuss this at the workshop if that's something we would like.
Can I offer to, just because I did sit through this two times last night, you can actually watch it on tape of Dover and Sherburne and actually see her present it, which was fabulous.
Dawn is ready to present it tonight, actually. I'll leave it.
God's listened to my prayers, but. But it is really good and I think you're going to have more, it's going to have more of an impact if we watch her present it.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you to our local cable companies for all your work.
And just one really important plug again to DSCF, the fact that we will now have five administrators, four principals, and our assistant superintendent going to Finland. And I've been to Finland and so many teachers going out to these really cool, innovative places to just steal ideas. There's, it's a good practice. One of the great things about the NEASC is that they send teams to schools to kind of peel away the layers and you learn so much through that process. These guys are in for a great learning experience and that will come back and work its way into the Dover Sherburne schools, which is fabulous. So kudos to you, Beth, for making it happen and to you guys for participating and to DSCF for helping us to make these things happen.
And to Maggie and Anne and Dawn for being on the committee too.
Yes.
Lots of hours invested, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Dawn?
Yes, so you have in your packet your financial statements as of June 4th. And for those of you who are joining us from the two local committees, you now have a revenue statement which you've never seen before. So a whole new financial statement to review on a monthly basis. So nothing, things have, there's not been material changes since the last time we reported to and made, that's why giving my report is fairly brief. If you look at your general fund revenues, we are still in line with approximately $100,000 of favorable variance mainly from transportation. What I've done to summarize, because we've talked a lot about uses of E and D and some of the other nuances of our numbers, at the bottom of that schedule, I have summarized the amounts that the committee has already taken action on. So there are three items that we have already approved for the use of your excess and deficiency. And for the new members too, that's equivalent to what you're used to hearing in your towns of free cash. So that's what the region has, is a safety net. So we did the security enhancements for $145,000. We applied $100,000 to your fiscal year 20 operating budget and then the region fully funded your fiscal year 20 capital projects. And then tonight, as we discussed at the last meeting, we're bringing forward the request to take the June, our regional transportation agreement that we did last year and run that through E and D so that it gets put into the regional transportation funds exactly the way we did this past year, which then allowed you to fund 100% of your capital. We can talk about that in a second, but I wanted to show you the uses of E and D. And then I did a preliminary roll forward based on what we know right now and what your E and D would look like at June 30th. So you start with your certified amount from last year. You can look up where I've taken that operating variance for revenue. And if you look at your expense surplus, I rounded it to 775. And then if you pull in the uses of E and D, the 805 from above, you see that we're estimating E and D at June 30th to be approximately 4.6% of the allowed. And I'm also just showing you what 5% would be just for comparison purposes. So I did that so that you could see the impact of the request for the vote tonight for the use of the transportation. Just to give the new members a recap of how we ended up with a $776,000, and again, this is estimate surplus made up of, our normal surplus is usually about 1% of our operating budget because as you know, you don't want to cut it too close. So 1% of your operating budget is about $246,000. That's almost exactly where we are right now if you take into account the other two variances that we have. One is the planned variance of the regional transportation vote that we took last year because we fully fund your regional transportation in the budget, but because we paid $226,000 of the regional transportation fund, that additional variance falls down as a positive variance. The other unexpected variance we had was that we saved over $300,000 in our healthcare over what we budgeted. If you remember, last year was a big year in changing plan design and we were able to capture, we were very conservative in our budgeting, but it allowed $300,000 to fall to the bottom line. So if you back out the $300,000 and the $227 in transportation, what's left of an operating surplus is usually, it's about what we expected. So that sort of summarizes where we are.
Regarding health insurance, is your open enrollment done?
It is.
And where are you at benchmark to high deductible compared to what you had expected?
There's still, I was out a couple of days last week for graduation and Tricia's been out, but basically we saw a little bit of movement, but very minimal, of people moving from high deductible to benchmark.
From whom the plan didn't work?
Exactly.
But will it be material to our planning?
No, we're talking less than 10 people.
Okay, that's what I want to hear.
Exactly. And we're continuing to have a few people take an opportunity to opt out because as you remember, that was a three-year option. So we do have several people, the people who did it last year are continuing and I think we have one or two new people coming on board.
That's pretty good.
Again, we are expecting to have more subscribers this year because we had a couple of unique situations this year where we had people in positions that just weren't taking insurance because they were either interim or we had some unfilled positions. So this is, we don't really know our full impact of new hires until they come on board with us in September. So that's another opportunity for us to sort of take, you know, draw a line and see and see where we are. But I was thrilled to see minimal movement between the two plan designs.
Thank you. Can I just say, I think that is in part because of the great education that you guys spent the time doing upfront. So thank you so much, it's really reaped.
Yeah, and I think fortunately, people had a favorable experience the first year. I think the people that are moving back are, it's a little bit more work and I think that they probably wanted to go back to the simpler way where you just sort of go versus having to work a little harder to get your bills paid and understand what you're doing. But we are seeing people using it as an additional way to put money aside. They are, we have several, actually a large amount of people who are contributing the maximum that you can, but can, which is for IRS purposes and benefit and also for long term, it is another vehicle for retirement savings. So I do think that's a very valuable option that we've been offering our current employees.
Agreed.
Thanks. Thank you.
And I have a question around the, you explained what the E and D is, but what does it stand for?
Excess and deficiency.
So that's why it's just surplus.
If you put your excess, you know, if you're deficient, you can pull.
You pull from it, thank you. And the region, the region has that option, Michael, because we are in essence a municipality. That's, in a region that has seven towns, it's impossible to bring everything to those towns and manage and operate. So somewhere along the line, the state determined that the region should be viewed as their own municipality and as such, we do have like a free cash, but it's just called excess and deficiency and it's to protect us.
It also is capped in like other towns and cities, so we are capped.
Where's the cap?
At 5%.
Oh, it is at 5, okay.
So anything, just to the mechanics, anything that falls through to that amount that it's above that gets returned back to the town.
The town.
So what are the reasons why, I think I said here we are, we're starting to be more proactive about managing that surplus? And last year when we realized we had a surplus and we worked with the two town finance committees with the option of taking that regional transportation. That's about the best place we have to sort of park some money. And we talked to them, you know, in detail about how we would use that money and we basically committed to using it to apply towards capital because back then, we actually thought we were going to have a substantial capital ask, but we've pushed some things aside. But what it allowed us to do was not to ask the towns for any capital money this year. They still reviewed our projects, but they didn't have to provide the funding for that. This year, we've had the same discussions with both finance and advisory, or advisory warrant, and are put onto the table the opportunity to put it towards capital. We have established an OPEB trust fund now, so there's an option to potentially use that funding or that extra money for that. And we're in this, you know, unique opportunity too where we're looking at transportation and the school start time. We could potentially pull some money from that, from E and D to cover potentially the extra bus. And for the region, just so you know, the region is reimbursed for regional transportation, but much like Circuit Breaker, it's on a year delay. So if we pre-fund it, the next year when we have to incorporate it into our budget, we'd be getting almost 75 to 80% back in reimbursement. So the net increase that we'd have to ask the towns for would be minimal because we sort of pre-funded that.
So you're not creating a fiscal cliff essentially?
Exactly.
And you have the cash flow issue covered?
Exactly.
Does that apply both for, you know, some of the things you've been talking around, potential additional buses, but also Metco? Or is that, that would not be eligible for regional?
Metco is not eligible for.
For regional reimbursement.
It's built into the Metco grant.
Right, and so to the extent it's not there, we're on our own for the, to pick up anything, any difference.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
So we are asking tonight that the motion's been provided, that you approve the transfer from E and D and amount equal to the June 2019 Chapter 71 regional transportation reimbursement. We don't know what that number is going to be, so that's why specifically say what the pay. payment is, but we don't know until about June 30th what that is, because what happens with regional transportation too, much like you're used to the towns with Circuit Breaker, at that last payment, they disperse everything they have remaining. So you usually get, hopefully, there's a little extra, so you get a higher reimbursement rate than you think you're going to get. So that's where we really don't know that number to the dollar until we get it in June 30th.
So can I hear a motion? That motion? Did I say, so the school to authorize the Regional Transportation Reimbursement Fund, no, I don't see all that, transfer from E and D and amount equal to the June 2019 Chapter 71 Regional Transportation reimbursements to the Regional Transportation Reimbursement Fund to be utilized in the upcoming fiscal year in accordance with Massachusetts general law?
So moved?
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Discussion?
No.
No? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, keep going. Are you done?
Yeah, I gave you a capital update. I gave you a capital update, and just quickly, you can see that this is probably the last time you'll see some of the years, because I'm going to roll them off next time, but most of them are left on, because the Lankwith Doors project did span a couple of years, and it was something that we finished this year. But you can see that we've already gotten started on the fiscal year 20s. And as I said, one of the benefits of having the region funded is that as soon as you guys made your hope to use E and D for those capital items, we were authorized to go ahead and start the purchasing. So the large purchase of the field mower was in at April break, and is allowed us to have these fields just looking fabulous, because they have two machines now that they can drive into the field, and there's less overtime, and it's actually been very beneficial to us. And the rest of them, I've just given you where we are scheduling, most of them have been scheduled, and we're just waiting for final piece of work to puzzle through. The kitchen floors are being done. In fact, when the kids' last lunch is done on Friday, they are dismantling the entire kitchen and moving it into Lankwith Commons, so that they can lay the floors down. Our hope was to have brought forward to you tonight, as I mentioned last time, an approval of a capital project using the Food Service Revolving Fund to purchase new servers. That's taken a little more time for Janelle to put that project together. If it comes to be that we get that quote, and it makes a huge difference for us to get it done in the summer, I may ask if we can do a mini-meeting, if you can come up with a quorum.
We have a meeting scheduled, a workshop scheduled for the 20th. We could have a meeting, official meeting before?
Okay.
Or after?
The 20th of June.
June.
Okay.
So next week, next Thursday?
Okay, she may have it by then. And so we can post an agenda to do that. We're looking at like $50,000 or $60,000, but the servers that we have, as you learn now as we're trying to move them, are, they don't even make those anymore, that's sort of how antiquated they are. So this is an opportune time for us to make that switch. We just haven't been able to get the quotes, because it's taking a little more time for that, people to come out and do the measurements and get it just right.
Do you know, John, are they heated servers?
There's cold and heated.
Okay, great. That was a key, I remember, in the food service options, to be able to get cooled and heated servers. So it will make a big difference for them, I know.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you. Okay, so we're moving on to the 20, approval of 2019-2020 student handbooks. We were able to look at these at our last meeting, to see some of those changes. Do people have further discussions, or do you have further things that you wanted to add?
No, no, I don't. Yeah, just, for the high school, it's just the three changes. I certainly can answer any follow-up questions.
The only thing that has come up in some discussions with committee members is the consistency in language between policy and the handbook. So where, like pronouns or things like that, that can be looked at, and definition, and definitions, but the policy subcommittee will look at that and we'll get back to you with that. So is it possible then, if we vote this in the policy subcommittee, makes a few minor changes, can we then revisit? Or do we have to vote now, so understanding that there may be some verbiage?
I think you should probably vote it, because it becomes the formal document that goes out this summer. But knowing that there may be some changes to the policies, but when you vote the changes to the policies, and they're contained within the handbook, that your vote on the policy trumps what's in the handbook.
We can, we can.
And then it gets updated when the handbook gets updated.
Okay.
Or they can have it updated along the way, whichever works.
We can truly update it online, right?
Yeah.
You don't send it out, you don't send our people.
We do not, it's all electronic.
All right, so that's, that's easy.
So then, then the conforming changes can be made and voted later.
Yes.
So I guess I have one, I'm looking to see, because I have a number of kind of questions. I think most of these are just consistency items. I'm not sure what page it is, it's just prior to.
Middle school or high school?
It is the middle school. Just prior to the last page, where it says page 60, there's reference to sexual harassment, which I think perhaps the sexual piece should come out, because I think it's intending to be harassment, any harassment.
Where, where?
The second to last page.
It's on page 26, if you're scrolling through.
It's just prior to where it says page 60, behavior for school-sponsored. There's one sentence and then the prior paragraph.
So you're saying that because the prior paragraph before that talks about, has been a victim of harassment?
It's all, yeah, this really discussing harassment, and it kind of specifically calls out sexual harassment, I just, I don't think that would be the intent.
Well, I mean, I wonder about that, because then it talks about unlawful. And I think that, I would want, I don't know that you just want to take out sexual in the sense that somebody has to go back and figure out whether or not, you know, above, they're talking about, if you're a victim of harassment, you need to report it, you know, on and on and on. And then there's special care, special note, the retaliation against an individual who's complained about sexual harassment is unlawful. So I don't know that it's actually unlawful to, I mean, is it something you should do?
I think it is from, at least what I'm, if I'm reading the procedures correctly, it does refer to that being unlawful in the document we looked at earlier tonight.
In a sense of bullying, or in a sense of harassment?
Well, harassment is a subset of bullying.
But it's quite different under Massachusetts state law.
At least in how they're defined.
Right. So Massachusetts state law is very specific when it comes to bullying, and bullying has a certain set of criteria that, under Massachusetts state law, may get bullying. Harassment might be a subset of bullying, but harassment is not illegal, whereas bullying is. Not that anyone, I mean, I'm not suggesting that harassment is not.
You're saying under state law?
Correct.
Yes.
I just would be concerned to change our handbook until we are sure that it complies with actual law.
Can I make a suggestion? Which is, this, this language has been reviewed.
This is from, I think this was reviewed by our attorneys.
Yeah. And so, and it's court, it's five and nine. Maybe what we should do is hold those comments and simply approve this. And then if we're going to have, if this policy committee is going to go through stuff, as I understand it, they didn't do a lot of work this past year, so maybe we'll look, we'll talk to Scott and John and see if there are things that want to be shored up, and you know what I mean? I don't know.
So no, I think that makes sense to forward all of that. We'll vote on this as-is, because we need to move on, understanding or agreeing that the policy subcommittee will get together, will look through, make sure there's consistency in language, then they can check in with Scott and John, also check in then with Joan Stein, to make sure that it's reviewed by our lawyer. Does that do any changing? I can't speak to that, I'm not.
I don't either.
I don't, I just don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. Does that work for you, for Michael?
Sure, sure. Provided this is just, yeah, sure.
Okay, thanks, thank you. So then, do I hear a motion to accept the middle school, excuse me, Dover Sherburne Middle School 2019-2020 student handbook? Do I have to do them separately, can't do them together? And then high school?
I think you do them separately.
Separately, okay. So moved? This is for the middle school one. Do you hear a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, can I hear a motion to approve the 2019-2020 Dover Sherburne High School student handbook?
So moved.
Do you hear a second? You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And thank you again, gentlemen, for your work on that. And now, since we want to continue on with all your work, let's go to the school improvement plans.
I can put it back. If I'm the first?
Yeah, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
I just want to thank council members, including Judy Mellett, for all their input and efforts. It's greatly appreciated. Our plan consists of three goals, which are a little tweaked from last year, but they're along the same lines. First goal is to maintain excellence and rigor while adapting best practices and programs to prepare graduates for success in a rapidly changing world. And this lends itself to what Beth was talking about earlier with the work at the Innovation Committee, and then a host of other things that we've had going on. We do have, thanks to DSEF, we do have a group of four teachers that will be heading to PBL workshops. Unfortunately, due to the timing of trying to register for it, it is not in Napa Valley, California, but Columbus, Indiana.
Oh, you're just kidding.
Aye, yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry too for that. But it will be very worthwhile. The offerings and what they'll bring back will be incredibly worthwhile. Along the same lines, we have, two of our educators are going to be involved with the Fuse Fellowship, which is a collaborative or group of educators from Massachusetts and Rhode Island that are working, are learning about personalized learning. So those two educators will be able to bring back, between the project-based learning workshops and the Fuse folks, we will have an influx of information and to move forward with what we're trying to do with the graduate. When we develop the rubric, competencies we're looking for in the portion of the graduate, we'll then have our teachers start to investigate competency rubrics. So what, how do we want our students, or how can our students demonstrate that they are meeting those, those goals? We'll continue our relationship with Olin College and pursue other STEM workshop for our kids. I was remiss in not mentioning it, Sandra Samarko, two weeks ago, took a group of students to Google Headquarters in Cambridge. She's, she's been fantastic in spearheading anything that's out there, if it is reasonable, she does it. And it's, the kids love it, they're eating it up. Beth had mentioned, it was mentioned earlier about RTI, between RTI and redevelopment of our D cap. I think we have a lot of things going on, and that does work hand-in-hand in meeting the needs of the needy students. And we're also going to go to work on differentiation, I'm sorry, I moved into the second goal, my apologies. This is, this is around the health and well-being of students and staff. So onto that goal, again, that's a continuation of what we started this year. What we started this year does not stop, it's, it's going to be continued on. But now we'll have the D cap in place to go along with what we're doing with RTI. And that committee has done a lot of work in getting teacher buy-in. So they'll be implementing best practices and tier-one interventions in the classroom, and how we can, we can provide some tier-two and tier-three interventions for students as well. And that is addressed later in that column with the TLC program, which the Regional School Committee has supported and made happen in the budget. The other thing we're going to do is to continue giving our staff members a menu of courses on social-emotional learning and special education course offerings through tech. And then also, Beth has organized or arranged for another round of the Ideas Course on Cultural responsiveness. So that is a great time, I'm looking forward, I want to be part of that myself. And then we'll work with the high school, school start times with, on those various subcommittees. And in particular, the schedule, and John Knight, we have already talked about it, John, I, and Ann, and Stephen, about what we can do to be more efficient with the schedule, and maybe look at other opportunities that exist with that moving of the start times. And the last, last goal is again around the content review, and this year it will be social studies, and their, their curriculum review will have a focus on bias and cultural responsiveness. And given that the content area, it is, it's a fabulous place to take a deeper dive into that, and what we can provide for our kids. ELA, and both ELA and math, Beth has already done a lot of work with this, but is to get the teachers thinking about, what are we doing with our small groups, and how can we tie the small group into that D cap and the RTI efforts as well? And I think, more language, with the FLESC program, where we'll, where we'll be, keep going with that. And we are very fortunate to have Lou D'Aroma, who you heard from earlier, joining us here at the middle school. It's a lost chick ring, but that's okay. She's a lot of knowledge, where these kids have been, and where they're going. And she was worried after, she was worried about presenting, having not had ample time to prepare. I was like, you don't have anything to worry about.
Yeah, she's fabulous.
Presentation was fantastic. And that, in a nutshell, is our, what we're looking to do this year.
Do we have any questions?
No, but I appreciate the focus on the three areas, and I do very much appreciate the, you know, teachers going out to get these grants to utilize the opportunities available by DSEF, but it doesn't just come your way. I know that they have to apply for the things, go and find the ideas, and I'm really excited that you are supporting their, their adventures and their new, new ideas, and it's really exciting to see the different areas that you guys are working. I think it's pretty clearly aligned to the kinds of things that we're talking about in the strategic plan.
They're all tied together.
Yeah.
I mean, the Innovation Committee, the start time, it's all one. And that's, I think what the staff is starting to realize is, it's not all over the board, it's, there's a common goal, and what's in the best interest of kids.
Importantly, from my perspective, that is a stress reducer. We talk about the stress of faculty, not knowing where your district is going, or where your building is going, or seeing inconsistencies in that, and wondering whether or not your goals are consistent with where the district's going, and if the superintendent walks in, am I off in left field? That's a stressor for teachers. This should actually make people feel more comfortable. This should actually make people feel more comfortable and at ease, because they know the direction they're pulling in is the direction the district's pulling in.
Yeah.
I would also like to say thank you very much for all this work into your committee, and also note that while there are only three large schools, there's so much. You're doing so much underneath all of that, it's...
That's not even all of it. We, we cut it back. Just for what Dr. Keough said, is there are a lot of other things that will happen, that will fall under these, under these things, and beyond. But, so it's not overwhelming.
Which is good. I do have a quick, I hope this is a quick question, and this may be more for Beth, but you just mentioned it, you kept, you talked about, you know, the bias and cultural responsiveness. And I was sort of wondering how, and the cultural responsiveness, rather, how do you define that at the middle school? What is cultural, how do you view cultural responsiveness? It's okay, I'm not sure. It's a big question, but I feel like it keeps coming, it comes up and up and up, and I'm just, would love to just hear.
I, I see it as, as meeting individual students' needs. Every student is different, and that, that doesn't, it's not skin color, it's not religion, it's where are they as, as learners? And we have to respond to where they are as individuals and learners, and, and meet them in that place and move them forward. That's how I, I see it.
Meaning it spans all of those?
Everything.
Not one thing, not just a racial or ethnic kind of effort?
Absolutely.
But rather an effort to recognize that every single one of our kids comes in with...
With differences.
Differences.
And background, with, with traumas in their backgrounds, and, and wonderful things that have happened in their backgrounds, and that impacts them as learners. So we have to be able to respond to, to where they are and help, help them navigate to where they need to get to.
But within the curriculum, we do know that there is a lot of bias, and we've heard about it for years from, from family members and people who take offense to it at various times during the year. It might be an assembly or whatever it is, in instruction, the book that we're reading, and we are hearing those kinds of things, and we're opening our eyes and ears, and I think that the training through Ideas has been really beneficial to our faculty. They are calling ourselves out. Would you agree?
I agree. A lot of work was done this year on the curriculum and the resources, the things that you read and that you can touch and that you can see, and especially in the English and the History Departments specifically. And the History Department's going to continue to look at that, and I think there's, you know, we're going to continue to look at our curriculum and make sure that all voices and identities and perspectives are present where possible, and also thinking about what voices are missing and, and what we can learn from that. But I also think it's, you know, tying into the, the instruction piece kind of is the next layer of that, which, which is why the individualized personalized learning, differentiated instruction, not every learner is the same component, is also part of cultural responsiveness and kind of the next layer that we're going to be adding on to.
Thank you, I appreciate, appreciate that. Okay, thank you. Can Mr. Smith?
Yes, so similar to the middle school, high school has three major areas of school improvement. The first is to pilot, evaluate, and create a, an advisory structure for our student body, and with the hopes that this will provide, similar to what NIASC has been calling for, similar to what our Challenge Success Survey results of connectedness, of having teachers and students in the building that have a connection to one another outside perhaps of their classroom, certainly outside of being the guidance counselor. There are a number of different programs out there. We want to pilot some in the fall, get feedback from our students, get feedback from our parents and our faculty to see what worked, with the hope to, by the end of that school year, implement our structure moving forward. So we will have piloting taking place all during the fall of some different programming. We've had a lot of different feedback from students around this, and one of the things they've cautioned is really thinking creatively as to how you pair up kids with teachers, because if it's not done properly, it's not going to work, you know? So we have to be, I think, thoughtful, reflective, and careful about that. That being said, we do feel like a lot of our kids do have a connection, but we feel as though there still are some that do not, or some that could strengthen those connections, and that's why that we're looking at this. And that ties in with the strategic priority of ensuring the health and well-being of the staff and students, and also maintaining excellence, rigor, and best practices at our school. The second one is anticipation of our new start times, a series of working committees. The faculties will have to be actively involved for buy-in, for creativity, for ideas, because a lot of it will change our current structures around extracurriculars, around pre and after-school help, around clubs, the drama program, athletics. So there's a lot there, and we felt as though that really should be one of our school improvement goals, because it's something that we're going to be actively involved in, and it's going to have to involve everybody. You know, that also is to ensure the health and well-being of staff and students, and also to maintain excellence, and similar to what Scott said, you know, we may find that we've got some opportunities here with this change. It's interesting in that, I'd say, for the most part, the high school, many of the high school staff members were probably not in support of a change, yet I feel like now that that has been resolved and we're moving forward, they're past that, and they're now thinking in terms of, okay, how do we then make this work? How do we tweak this? And, you know, so we've already got two or three departments that have already put forward five or six different scheduling type of opportunities that would entail the extra-help portion, that would entail how do we handle sports, extracurriculars? How do we handle student transitions and looking at break and looking at common blocks? And Scott and I, along with Ann and Stephen, have also had some initial discussions with food service, with Janelle, because as you know, we share the same cafeteria with four lunch waves, so that's something that we have to think about as well. And it will be, it'll be quite a task, but I think that we've got people in a good place now where they know it's taking place, and so how do we now make it the most efficient, effective, and supportive of, of students and faculty? So that's the second one. Third one, we are part of the NEASC accreditation process. Last fall, we had our two-day collaborative conference visit with three members from NEASC, two educators and a member of the actual commission. They came, they looked at our self-study and determined areas of growth that we picked out, but also areas of growth that they would also like to see based upon their observations. Falls into the major areas of technology, our staff and NEASC is calling for reliable, updated, and transferable technology that our students and our faculty can use that is consistent and effective. The safety concerns that were raised, and as Dr. Keough indicated during the Joint School Committee meeting, we've taken a lot of steps to start addressing some of those things, and there will be some additional features that, you know, at the high school that we might look at. We may be using our student IDs as a barcode mechanism for senior privilege to sign in and sign out, so just some efficiencies there. The other area is growth mindset that was identified by the faculty. I find this to be fantastic, because I think their recognition of that is a big step in the right direction, similar to what Dr. Keough said at the Joint School Committee meeting a little bit earlier. The school district does a lot of things well, and so sometimes when you do that, making change and movement is harder, because people are more reluctant to say, well, wait a minute, we have this formula, but we have to consistently keep looking at change, because we have to ensure that we're improving for all, that we're keeping up with the times, that we are not just resting on laurels or looking at past data, because the cohort of kids that are coming to us are different. So it's addressing those issues. That full visit will take place in the fall of 2020, so next year, the focus really is working on the professional growth plan that was agreed upon by our faculty and NEASC's visiting committee. The one extra area that they wanted us to address is that of curriculum mapping, and they wanted to ensure that all courses had detailed curriculum maps that could be placed in one location, so that if members of the community, central office administration, visiting committees wanted to see the written curriculum with the backward design, as well as the essential questions, would be there. Several departments have completed this, other departments are further behind. Some of that was created simply because we were using Aspen and other formats, and what we've decided is we're using, we're going with Google, and we're able to then interface much easier with each of our departments across the board. So that's the, the third goal. And then in addition, we will be participating in the Social Studies Curriculum Review. In past years, I put that in as a goal. I didn't this year, because it's now part of our practice. It's what we do, and it's not necessarily so much that it's new. Also, the Innovation Committee, as Beth had talked about, we've got a number of faculty members from each department who will be representing that group, and we will be continuing to do our work with cultural responsiveness. I have to say, a number of teachers engaged in this particular goal this year and did some terrific work. English and Social Studies probably saw the most tangible overt examples, but I will tell you this too, the Art Department did a tremendous job in looking at art, how is art portrayed, who's being portrayed, what type of artists? You know, I had an interesting end-of, end-of-year summative around the topic of the Renaissance, and one of our Social Studies teachers said the whole phrase of Renaissance man, and she questioned that and had students do research on women during the time of the Renaissance, and how they actually contributed so much, yet our books don't tell us that. Our books tell us about these male artists. And the other group is World Language, where it does tend to match anyways, but you should know that our AP Spanish and our AP French teachers, as part of the AP curriculum, do a whole unit around socioeconomic status and on cultural bias, and at looking at the divides that exist in French-speaking nations and Spanish-speaking nations all across the world. And so students get to actively engage in that and compare it to their own communities, which is actually fascinating. And as part of that actual exam, they have to show proficiency on that. And so it's, it's interesting. It goes far beyond just being able to perform sentence structure, or be able to perform, you know, speaking at a high level. It's also understanding the cultural components of these various nations, and it's not just, okay, it's French, so you're studying France. No, you're looking at many African nations, you're looking at some nations in South America, you're looking at, you know, cultures that have sort of spattered all over the place. So we've got a lot to work on next year.
And you've done a lot.
Yeah.
You guys deserve, I mean, just going down that list, John, you guys deserve a ton of credit. We know we have asked a lot of both of you, and you've responded, and I want to say for the record how much I appreciate it.
Our staff's appreciative.
Yeah, they have, and you know, and, and I thank Beth and you for giving us that push, you know, because I think sometimes that's what you really need, and we need to know that, yes, we do some things well, but we can do some things better, and we can also just have a growth mindset of looking at things from a different perspective. So the fact that our high school faculty came up with growth mindset...
That's impressive.
Is pretty remarkable.
That's pretty impressive.
Because there are some people there that are talented teachers, but you sometimes will say growth mindset might not be the first thing in their vocabulary, right?
That's awesome.
I said to Beth, we're getting there. We're trying to get the engines going a little faster, but, but we are.
These things take time, and we've said that all along. It takes a long time to implement the kinds of changes that we have outlined. For them to really take hold takes a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you. A question, and, well, maybe throwing a comment back to you, Ann, but the, you mentioned the, the French and Spanish, the cultural responsiveness, that's for AP only?
No, so there's a number of different, but those are just the, the more primary examples. It's being done, integrated through all of the courses, for sure. I just point those out, because those are things that sometimes I think we look at the AP as a very prescribed curriculum, and it can be, and what I'm encouraged by with this is they're expanding it beyond that.
The College Board itself is expanding.
Yeah, they're having a little bit of a growth mindset.
But this is outside of their, of what they're prescribing?
No, it's part of the...
No, it is, it is part, yeah. It's part of it, yeah.
Their prescribed curriculum?
Yeah, absolutely.
Got it.
But it's also being integrated into all of our Spanish and French courses throughout the curriculum. Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks. And then the other, I, I don't, I don't know if our headmasters were in the meeting when you had just urged on the, the start time effort to remain inclusive. So I don't know if you guys were, were, are you guys here for that? That, I don't know, I don't know if you just, since, since they're here, if you want to reiterate, since they're, they're leading up three, three of the six committees.
All I was, all I was saying was encouraging to include members of the community as much as possible.
Sure.
Pushing out information is great, but that costs, still causes a lot of people to glaze over, and they really need to, to buy in, they really need to be included and participate, and actively participate. So, whenever possible, reach out, include, include.
And I just want to say thank you, particularly for, for addressing the advisory issue. I think that it's a sticky situation, because you have a lot of pressures on you for a high school curriculum, and to take time to thoughtfully and responsibly create an advisory program that's going to work for the high school and for our students and for their needs, you could tell there's a lot of thought and reflection going into that pilot. And similarly to the middle school plan, you have three goals, but there's a lot of depth and, and meat in there, and it is clear that you are doing a thoughtful job of integrating lots of different stakeholders into making actual lasting change in each of those goals. So thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, so we need to now, I hear a motion to approve the middle school 1920 school year school improvement plan.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Y'all asleep?
Yeah, pretty much.
Discussion, all in favor? Great. Same for the high school, motion to approve the high school 1920...
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay. Thank you. I'm going to suggest that we do the subcommittee assignments online, and we will follow up with each other.
Just let us know.
Can I just add a new piece? So there's recent legislation that was passed in January 2019 that affords the Regional School Committee the same sort of policies that the two locals have been able to have, where you can appoint just a single signer for your warrant instead of three. And by doing that, then what we would incorporate into your monthly packet is a warrant report showing you what funds and the amounts and what dates they were processed. And so I made a copy for you, Ann, if you want to share with your committee, but this is the legislation that was passed, taking away the need to have three signers for the region and just having one. They had left the region out in the Modernization Act of 2016, and it was brought forward this year to allow, to allow you the same opportunity.
Is there any, any regional agreement prescription from, you know, from having somebody from one town or the other sign for, no?
No, because what I was probably suggesting, you have two signers, and they can alternate or share the responsibility, because we process probably twice as many warrants as the towns see. So it's a weekly, if you stay on top of it, it's a weekly visit to the White House.
So that's a good way to do it, we could do one from each.
Okay. And they're always there to be reviewed. I mean, in most towns, we, everything's right in our offices for the region, so anyone's ever, can come, they're in the file cabinet upstairs, call in, you know, warrants and whatnot, in detail, but I think this will streamline, it will be more timely in the signature process, only having one, and it sort of streamlines the efficiency of how you guys spend your time.
Okay, so we can...
You can assign two people to that, and you don't have to vote on that, you just basically...
Yeah, you just assign, but I wanted to tell you that before you...
Make it one of your subcommittee assignments.
All right, awesome. Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, the appointment of the regional treasurer, and I have...
So I did, I included a memo by your seat, so we're doing our annual approval of Jim Egbert as your treasurer, which he has been since the school year 2003, 2004, but why But why I had to pull off your consent agenda this year was because he's also announcing his retirement at the end of fiscal year twenty. So I wanted the committee to know that now. And, um, we have, of course, in January, I'll do some time researching because it's been a lot of time since we've done a search process. But, you know, to talk to some of the other regional, um, school districts and just see what the best way is to go about hosting, doing the search for his replacement, because I'm also hoping to have some transition time. That they can sort of spend a little time together and, um, have a, you know, a nice handoff of those responsibilities.
Okay, thank you. Um, so do I hear a motion to appoint James Egger as treasurer for the Dover Sherburne Regional School District for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, all in favor? It's unanimous?
I, I do have maybe one, one question. I know somebody had, and I don't know who it was, in, in the last joint meeting, kind of mentioned that, that, uh, perhaps sometime in the future, you would need some additional resource. And I'm not sure if that was in a plan or kind of where that came from. But I don't know if kind of in this next year process, that's an opportunity to kind of rethink the, the resources that you have and, and
Yeah, it'll be nice to have a, a new sort of, um, look at things from a different perspective, only because we've had him for so long.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, just so that you guys know, I think for the past five years, he actually, he's remotely our treasurer because he, um, resides in Arizona. So he does visit us typically, um, for the, the, uh, in the summer when we're doing the year end work. And then he usually tries to be here when your audit is presented. But that, um, the weather has been causing issues, I think, the last two years. So, um, it's a, he's been fabulous, this transition, because he has so much historical knowledge, has been very helpful for me. But I think he's now ready to sort of, um, retire probably for the eighth time in his career. And it'll give us a, a fresh approach of working on some things that we do. So I'm really excited about that. We'll miss Jim, but really excited about the new opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Um, so now we've got the consent agenda, I want to just really quickly say thank you, thank you to D S E F. To the board members and volunteers and to the generosity of our communities for enabling D S E F to fund really an amazing array of opportunities for students and staff. Really, we're so fortunate. It's unbelievable. And I'd also like to thank, um, members of the, generous members of the community for their effort of the music department donations to really keep those two programs up and running. So do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes also the minutes, May fifth?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Quickly, there's communications. You can look those on your own. Do I have anything else? Do you want your motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Anyone else that not in favor? Okay, all in favor? All right.